Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Gedenburgh Council Planning Committee. My name is councillor John Truska and I'm chair of the planning committee. The webcasting notice, I must remind you that the order of this meeting has been live broadcast on the council's website. On the video of the meeting, I'm hearing a lot of paper rustling. Will people please mute themselves unless they wish to speak? Will people please mute themselves unless they wish to speak? I can see a lot of unmuted windows. I don't want to name names, but if you could just check that you're muted, please. The video of the meeting will be published after the meeting and will be available on YouTube. Further details available on page two of your agenda papers. I don't know how many people, how many hits we got for the last meeting. But I'd like to introduce the officers from Gedenburgh Council who would be providing support during this meeting. They are from the planning department, Mike Avery, head of development in place, Kevin Cartwright, principal planning officer, and Nigel Bryan, principal planning officer. From our legal department, we have Sarah Pires, who's a solicitor. From our democratic services department, we have Alec Doubley, who is the service manager, democratic services, and Kate Goodall, who is a democratic services officer and clerk to the committee. Just a few preliminary notices. Will all the members of the committee please ensure that their microphones are switched off or muted at all times when they're not required to speak? And only switch on or unmuted when they're called on to speak and they speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones. When a councillor is called on to speak, will they please limit their contributions to three minutes or less? In order that everyone gets a fair chance to air their views. Now, some changes to normal procedure will include the following. Under apologies for absence and substitutions, the clerks of the committee will introduce all councillors who registered their attendance, as well as apologies and substitutions. At that point in the agenda where I would normally ask for a proposal and a second from the floor to simplify things, I will propose each item on the agenda as chair. And councillor Paul Wilkinson will second as vice chair. However, this is in no way an indication of approval or otherwise to any proposal or application by either of us, but merely a means of expediting the proceedings. When it comes to that point in the agenda where I would normally open up the debate for contributions from the floor, instead, the clerks of the committee will ask councillors by name to make their contributions questioned, et cetera. In the past, we've done this in alphabetical order. There's going to be a change in the system in that they are now going to be randomised. So people have to listen out for Kate to read out their name because they will not come along in alphabetical order as they did before. So, you know, if you've got any questions or contributions, sort of be ready to make them as soon as the planning officer has finished his introduction to the to the item on the agenda. Please observe the three-minute timelet when it comes to the vote or the recommendations at the end of the item that will be similarly conducted in the same random manner as the contributions and questions were. I hope that's all clear. I hope you received your supplements to the main agenda papers with plans elevations and photos to the various planning applications. I know some people are having problems with the mail, but if you're not getting these in time or getting them late, could you contact Alec Doubley so he can take it up with the Royal Mail? I know myself that my last environments and licensing meeting, the last Tuesday, I didn't get the agenda papers for it until the following Saturday, i.e. four days after the meeting took place. So if that happens to you or the papers turn up really late, make sure you get in contact with Alec so he can have a go at Royal Mail. Okay.
Chair, councillor Lawrence has got his hand up.
Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Lawrence.
Sorry, having difficulty here, I'm muting. Yeah, could you explain the change in calling people to speak, please? Why, the reason for the change?
I'm just saying, before the speakers would be selected in alphabetical order, but to, you know, that was getting rather tedious, I think. So in order to make it more democratic, it's going to be randomised. So you have to, Kate has done an excellent exercise of short notice to enable this to happen. So all I'm saying is wait for your name to be called and you will not necessarily be called in alphabetical order. So just listen out for your name.
Yeah, I understand that. I just don't see the reason, but thank you for your explanation.
Sorry, I didn't catch the last bit of that.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't see the reason. What's the difference between calling people? You said it would make it more democratic. I can't see.
It makes people's replies more spontaneous rather than waiting for somebody to take the lead. And, you know, I mean, it's just an experiment. We'll see how it goes. If you don't like it, your objection will be registered. Right, the first item on the agenda is attendance, apologies for absence and substitutions. Kate, would you like to do the honours on that one? Can you agree?
Yeah, so councillor Truska.
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Barnes.
Good evening.
Councillor Barnfather.
Present.
Councillor David Ellis.
Present.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Present.
Councillor Elwood.
Present.
Councillor Hope.
Present.
Councillor Keneely.
Present.
Councillor McCrossan.
Present.
Councillor Lawrence.
Present.
Councillor Miller.
Present.
Councillor Paling.
Present.
Councillor Parr.
Present.
And councillor Wheeler.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've received apologies from councillor Michael Adams and councillor Alex Scoggy. And councillor McCrossan is a substitute this evening.
Thank you very much. Second item is to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting held on the 13th of January 2021, which you'll find on pages seven to thirteen of your agenda papers. I'll move as chair and ask councillor Paul Wilkinson to second as vice chair.
Second chair.
Thank you. Please indicate if you don't approve of any item on the on the papers, otherwise we'll take them as read. I don't see any hands going up. Okay, the third item on the agenda, sorry, the planning committee protocol is next, which you'll find on page fifteen to seventeen, which I'm sure you've all read and understood. Third item on the agenda is a declaration of interest. I'll declare a collective non-percenary interest on behalf of the committee for item six of the site is in the ownership of the council and the council is also the applicant. To go on to agenda item four.
Chair, I have my hand raised.
Sorry, councillor Chris Barnfather, I'm sorry, councillor Barnfather.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can I declare a non-percenary interest in item number five, please? Application 2020 oblique 1108, land east of sixteen, Kickhill Lane, Ravenshead.
Okay.
Just for explanation, Chair, I'm the chair of the parish council. Part of the application in relation to, or part of the recommendation in relation to this application is a recommendation for an open space contribution that as Gedenburgh Council own no land within Ravenshead Parish and there is a condition that the money will be spent in the parish, it would be normal for that money to be passported to the parish council, which I am the chair of. I've taken advice from legal services and I think for openness and transparency, I will withdraw from this application.
Okay, councillor, very much for that. Agenda item four, application 2020 stroke 0822. Please note, there's a typo on page four of your agenda papers where it's incorrectly listed as 2019 0822. Okay. Landoff Flats Lane, Calberton, reserve matters approval for the erection of eighty-two dwellings and public open space pursuant to outline permission 2020 stroke 0726, which I think we dealt with in October last year, which you'll find on page twenty of your agenda papers. I'll ask Nigel Bryan to introduce this application for us.
Thank you, Chair. And just for clarification, there's a minor typo on page twenty-one in section 2.2. It should read section fifty-two of the Town Country Planning Act. The word planning is missing from that sentence, so if the avoidance of data should be in there. This is a reserve matters application pursuant to outline permission 2020 0726, erection of eighty-two dwellings. Matters under consideration are appearance, landscaping, layout and scale. For the audience of data, it's also proposed to alter the wording of condition three in respect of landscaping to what I'll just read out. Prior to above groundwork commencing, a planting schedule for planting to the front of all residential plots shall be submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. The scheme as approved shall be implemented prior to occupation of the plot to which the landscaping relates. The planting shown in the public open space shall be implemented prior to occupation of the first dwelling on site. Any trees, shrubs or plants that die within a period of five years from the completion of each development phase or are removed and/or become seriously damaged or diseased in that period shall be replaced and if necessary, continue to be replaced in the first available planting season with others of a similar size and species. In respect to the application, it's going to be built out at a density of thirty point five dwellings per hectare, which is considered to be acceptable with a minimum of twenty-five per hectare identified in local plan policy LPD 33. The actual layout of the site is largely guided by its long and narrow nature. It will be formed around four distinct blocks, each of which will be outward facing with public open space to the north. The public open space will be a local equipped area of play incorporating five pieces of equipment. The houses will be a mixture of two and two and a half stories in scale. A total of sixteen affordable dwellings will be provided, or twenty percent, as required by the section 106 legal agreement, with eight two-bed, six three-bed and two four-bed properties. Seventy percent will be affordable rent and thirty percent social rent. There will be in two groups of eight towards the southern edge of the site. The house type is considered to be appropriate in the context and will largely reflect those on the opposite side of Flats Lane and would typically be family housing. Materials proposed would reflect others in the area of the red brick predominant. Adequate parking provision is proposed with at least two car parking spaces provided for each unit. Create more diverse housing mix and comply with policy G5 of the Calberton neighbourhood plan. Six dwellings that comply with section M42 of the building regulations are proposed to be erected. Tangible benefits include step-free access and associated parking, step-free access to the water closets and outdoor space, use for some wheelchair users to the accommodation and sanitary facilities, and wall-mounted switches and sockets for people with reduced reach, all of which is over and above the minimum requirement for building regulations. In respect to residential amenity, the dwellings would have appropriate sized gardens and it is not considered that residential amenity resisting all proposed occupiers would be compromised. As a result and taken into account, planning each of the site and character of the surrounding area, it is recommended that the application be granted reserve matters approval, subject to conditions outlined on pages thirty and thirty-one of the report and as updated previously with regards to condition three. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Nigel. So the proposal is planning application number 2020 stroke 0822, reserve matters approval, appearance, landscape, layout and scale. The erection of eighty-two dwellings and public open space pursuant to outline permission 2020 stroke 0726. I will formally move the application as chair and ask councillor Wilkinson to second, please.
Formally seconded, Chair.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask Kate to open the debate by running through the list of councillors to speak.
Councillor Hope.
Why did I not expect that? Thank you very much, Chair. This is exactly what I said when we got rid of the conditions on the trees. We were told then that the developer would come back with a detailed plan for the replacement, but, you know, bearing in mind, as I said last time, effectively they're removing virtually every tree and every hedge around the boundary, apart from the boundary that goes to the William Lee Park and further along. And we'd get a detailed schedule of replacement. This in fact deals only with the bit in the north of the sector that's going to be used for public open space, stroke swings and roundabouts, you know, a play area. One of the things that crosses my mind is that there's a perfectly good play area in the William Lee Park, which is very close. Maybe a financial contribution towards the maintenance of that and the improvement of it would have been a better use of the money and the bit in the north of the area could have been used for some other form of public immunity, but that's just one issue. But the thing is, we haven't got a detailed plan. We've got a plan for one tiny section of this development and we're told that later on, when the houses are built, or during the building or whenever, we will get more and we'll be told what's going to be done within the development to actually make it more attractive, more suitable, more pleasant to live in. We've not got, we were told we would be shown plans for the lot of the trees that are all being removed, which I don't object to, but plans to screen the development around the corner with Park Road, but that isn't mentioned in this. You know, in other words, once again, it's piecemeal. We're getting a little bit, but we're not seeing the overall plan. And finally, you know, one of the things that keeps on annoying me was I'm very happy that there's affordable housing in this development. I note that the officer in his introduction said that these are going to be in two bands of eight to the southern end of the development. Now, you know, this tends to create problems. We consistently, and it's in the neighbourhood plan which Gedenburgh supported, we've consistently said in developments of this sort of size particularly, affordable housing, rentable housing should be distributed throughout the development and be indistinguishable from the rest of the development, which is socially a good thing to do. But again, the developer didn't want to do it and Gedenburgh said, oh, okay, then I know we'll say, well, they're closer to the shop, so that's a good thing and it's all right. Yeah, I'm really not happy about the whole development at all, but I've made my point many times at this committee. But I do think, yeah, every time I say something along the lines of, well, when are we going to see what's going to replace all this greenery that you're tearing out? I get told one thing and then low and behold, it doesn't happen. We've got a little bit of it. At some other point in time, probably when it's too late to actually make any objection to it, we'll get the rest and it may not be appropriate. But by then, who cares? And that is what bothers me. Why do we not get detail upfront? We weren't told there were going to be private drives. We weren't told there were going to be unadopted roads on this at the start, but we agreed them last time we looked at it. And I still think that's a really bad move, regardless of all the arguments for, oh, well, the people will pay because that hasn't happened. Those roads will go to that and ruin and probably won't get there. It's just little things like that, that I'm told one thing at this committee and then it changes a bit. Okay, we've got planning now for the amenity open space and the swings. But that isn't the development. That is a really tiny portion of the development. The development is all the rest of it, where all the houses are. What sort of greenery to soften the infrastructure is going to be put there and we don't know. But we're going to allow this to go ahead, knowing that we don't know if you agree to this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Hope, do you want to come back on that, Nigel, or leave it?
Yes, if you don't mind, thank you, Chairman. With regard to the trees, paragraph 7.10 of the report identifies that thirty-one trees has been removed and within the public open space is going to be forty-four to replace in them, so there is going to be some gain. And then with regard to the planting within the front of the plots, you know, that is going to be largely domestic in scale, but, you know, the final detail of that is intended to be controlled by the updated condition three that I referred to. With regard to the affordable, it's a difficult balancing act in terms of managing where the affordable is and how far you would intersperse them around the site. There's two separate groups of eight. They aren't going to be grouped into one group of sixteen, so it isn't dispersed between those two. And, sorry. And the other thing being, of course, that the affordable housing and registered social landlords like to have them in a, to a degree, you know, grouped in small groups so that they can actually manage. If for I mean sake, there was one at the north of the site and one on the east, then it tends to be harder for the registered social landlords to manage. So, you know, to my better view, a group of eight is considered to be acceptable. On to the parks in the public open space. The section 106 was written in a way whereby there could be a contribution to the adjacent site or that there could be provision provided within the site. Having consulted with the parks officer, he felt that it was appropriate to have, you know, a local equipped area of play towards the north of the site and that's really what we've achieved. They've worked with us in terms of updating the equipment to get the five pieces and making sure that it's appropriate in the existing methods. So I do think there's been some benefits that have, you know, been secured during the course of the application. So I think that'd be the main comment, hopefully, of just everything that councillor Hope raised. Well, that's the thing, I think there's a condition about boundary treatment, so, you know, on condition four, so through a combination of that and the landscaping, then we could always try and get some kind of plant in along that front edge. And I think if you go to, Kev, if you could perhaps go to the colour layout, I think it's indicated there in terms of what the boundary treatment might be.
Okay, thank you for that. Sarah Pires, hello, Sarah.
Hello, if I may just add, you raised the issue of other areas within the development that aren't part of the designated open space. And I just wanted to clarify that the section 106 agreement did include maintenance of other areas within the development that are not adopted for maintenance at the public expense.
So I didn't understand that. Would you say it again?
So the section 106 agreement that was entered into includes long-term provision for long-term maintenance, not just of the designated open spaces, but of other areas within the development that haven't been adopted for maintenance at the public expense.
So in twenty years' time, when we have problems with the adopted roads, who do we address? Gedenburgh Council?
The maintenance, I believe, is for ten years, so.
Right, so after ten years, it disappears, yeah?
Under the section, the way that the section 106 agreement has been drafted, yes.
I would hope any road would last ten years. The point is, if it's an unadopted road, your problems occur in twenty to twenty-five years. And that's what I'm saying. You know, a ten-year agreement on a halfway decent road, it's going to be fine because nothing's going to happen much in ten years. But in twenty-five years, who's going to take responsibility for maintaining the surface, looking after the sewerage, dealing with any problems? That, you know, that's the problem with unadopted roads. Well, yes, I'll have to see about that in ten years' time, but it's, well, not much else I can say, is there? I mean, I'm not a whiteboard crystal ball.
We can't do anything in ten years. We're supposed to. We are supposed to be planning for a development that will last into the future. We're not supposed to be saying, oh, well, if it goes tits up in ten years' time, we'll have another look at it because we won't be able to do anything then. But that's what I keep saying all the way through. That's why we insist on a master plan. That's why, we never get it, but that's why we put all those things in the neighbourhood plan in order that we would actually have some control and know where any development we're going and what we were going to end up with. And so far, the evidence of this development is it has changed consistently and it's kept being voted through regardless of what I say. But it should be down to me.
Okay, councillor Hope, you've made your point quite happily, yeah. So can we move on, please, Kate?
Councillor Barnfather.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, the principle of development on this site was established when outline permission was granted in accordance with the allocation within the local plan. It's only reserved matters before us today, as has already been indicated by the officer or by the chair in the introduction. So I'm happy with the recommendation as it stands. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Councillor Parr.
Thank you, Kate. Yes, I note the concerns shown by the members of public for the loss of trees. But if I go back to one of our officers, Kevin, you said there will be planting afterwards. Can you confirm that, Kevin?
Yeah, just in terms of paragraph 7.10, it identifies there that thirty-one trees has been removed and forty-four specimens are proposed to be replaced and within the public open space. So yes.
Yeah, you've given me a bit more detail there, Kevin, thank you. I've read it now, yes.
Okay.
Kate.
Councillor McCrossan.
Yeah, I've just got one query that came up when councillor Hope was talking about affordable housing. If there are sixteen or so properties, is it anticipated that a number of those properties will be purchased by private landlords? Is that a normal procedure or normal? Anybody?
The affordable housing is under control of registered social landlord. So seventy percent will be affordable rent and thirty percent will be intermediate ownership, which is typically shared ownership. So if I'm to say the people might get a deposit of fifty percent and only fifty percent and they'll pay rents on the other fifty. So it'll all be under control of, you know, an RSL, registered social landlord.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Paling.
Thank you, Kate. I too am slightly concerned about the site in sympathy with councillor Hope. But my main point would be, why do developers always go to the bare minimum of affordable housing? This is actually just under the twenty percent. I know if it's rounded up, it meets the twenty percent deadline. But I would hope that we could But I would hope that we could do something better in the future. Apart from that, I will be supporting the application. Thank you.
Councillor Elwood.
Thank you, Chair. As councillor Hope mentioned earlier, I had concerns about the unadopted roads within the site. But obviously, that was an issue that was decided at a previous application. So that's sort of a battle we've lost, I suppose. The only thing that I would have concerns about would be the bunching together of the social housing into the groups of eight. So I find that a little bit strange. I would have thought, I think the phrase of pepper pots, is that the phrase that's used, that they tend to be pepper potted around the development, which I would have thought would have been better. But aside from that, I don't have any other concerns. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Barnes.
Yes, I'm quite happy with most of the planning applications at this point. What I'm concerned about is Flats Lane. Where the property is on Flats Lane now, there's always cars parked on it. And if we're parking the cars on the other side of the road where the development is going to take place, it's going to make Flats Lane very, very dangerous indeed. It's used very well as a cut through out of the village. And I think if we start parking on the opposite side to where the property is already, then it can cause some problems on Flats Lane. That's my only problem with it.
Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence.
No real further comment other than to support the comments of those who are are concerned about the bunching of the social housing. Pepper potting is the right term, Andrew, and I don't see any reason why it can't be enforced.
Thank you.
Councillor Wheeler.
No further comments. So the only thing I would say is the comments that I would have said have already been made, particularly the ones around social housing and the issues around parking. Thank you.
Councillor David Ellis.
Thank you. My only concerns with this were the housing mix. But I'm reassured by the explanation that Mr. Brian's given and on paragraph 7.6, that we are getting a mix of affordable houses and that the houses, the particular six house types, are going to meet the needs of the population in Calverton, which we know is more elderly than typically across the border. So I'm happy to support this.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Thank you. I've got no further comments. What I would have said has already been said. So that's it. Thanks.
Councillor Kenneely.
Nothing further to add. Obviously, the degrees was positive and also the affordable housing for 70%. So no, nothing else to add.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to support councillor Paling's comments around the rounding on social housing. And I'd like to see future encouraging developers to round up rather than round down. But overall, I'll be supporting the application.
Councillor Miller. Councillor Miller, could you unmute? Councillor Miller, you just need to unmute your microphone because we can't hear what you're saying. No, that's it, I think. Yes, that's it, that's it.
All I'm saying is I support the recommendation. Not everything's perfect, but I think there's been an awful lot of work done to appease the people living in that area. And we do need the housing.
Councillor Truscott.
Well, yeah, as councillor Barnfather says, we've already approved the outline. This Flats Lane development has been debated several times already. And this is the reserve matters. And, you know, I fully support the officer's recommendation on this. So I will be voting in favour of this. Okay. So I'll close the debate if everybody has finished. Or we're content that we move to the vote. The recommendation is on page 30 of your agenda papers, and it is to grant reserve matters approval. Subject to the conditions listed on page 1331, including the amended condition three. And I'll ask Kate to run through the roll call of councillors to record their votes, please.
Can I just confirm, Chair? Do you want me to do this in the same order or in the same order they were invited to speak?
Yes, in the same order as the speakers.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Thank you. Councillor Hope.
Against.
Councillor Barnfather.
For.
Councillor Parr.
Four. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Kenneely.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Councillor Miller.
Four.
Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, Chair. That was carried.
Okay, that's, the application has been approved. We move on to agenda item five, which is application 201108, land east of 16 Kick Hill Lane, Ravenshead. Erection of up to seven dwellings with private accesses and garaging. Which you'll find on page 34 of your agenda papers. I'd like to ask my caverie if he could introduce this item for us, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This application is a resubmission of the previously refused scheme for eight dwellings on the site, which is currently the subject of a planning appeal. Outline permission is now sought for the erection of up to seven dwellings on the site. Matters of access, layout, scale and appearance have been submitted. The principle of residential development has been established on the site in its allocation as part of a larger allocated site, with up to 20 dwellings in the local planning document. Kick Hill Lane comprises of a mix of detached bungalows and two-storey dwellings, predominantly set out in a linear form with dwellings facing the highway. There is considerable variation in scale and design of the properties along Kick Hill Lane, which creates an aesthetically pleasing and interesting street scene. In terms of the layout proposed, the development has taken account of the shape of the site, which has a depth equal to approximately twice the width, resulting in three dwellings being located to the front facing the highway and four dwellings located to the rear in a linear form of development. Historically, this type of layout is not prevalent on Kick Hill Lane and was resisted by the local planning authority when considering three separate planning applications made on land at 22 Kick Hill Lane, which comprises the western part of the application, which comprises the western part of the allocation. And the graphic on the screen now, it shows to the west. So if members look at that where the cursor is now, that is the development that was, that has been approved by, on appeal, by the appointed planning inspector. So that clearly shows a form of backland development. So this scheme now proposed is not dissimilar to that development. And it should be noted that the front three properties approved under the previous permission at 22 Kick Hill Lane are now under construction. I therefore give significant weight to this grant of permission and the construction of the dwellings, which, in my view, has changed the character of Kick Hill Lane. The proposed dwellings are all two-storey in scale and will give a contemporary design. The density of the development will be approximately 17 dwellings per hectare, which is below the 20 dwellings per hectare identified for Ravenshead. The policy does allow for a lower density where there is a convincing need for a different figure. I'm convinced that a lower figure is justified, having regard to the existing low-density development on Kick Hill Lane. Also, the density is not so different to the indicative density of 16 dwellings per hectare, which would be achieved if a comprehensive development of 20 dwellings had come forward. The separation distances between the proposed dwellings and the existing dwellings are considered to be acceptable, having regard to possible overlooking, overbearing and overshadowing impacts. Each dwelling will be served by either a single or double garage and a minimum of two vehicles could be parked to the frontage of each property. Car parking provision is therefore policy compliant. As noted earlier, the site forms part of a comprehensive site allocation for residential development, X5 Kick Hill Lane A. While it is a comprehensive site allocation, it is in multiple ownerships and was in July 2018 when the local planning document was adopted. This will be expected. The entire allocation will be expected to deliver 30% onsite affordable housing and education contribution and a public open space contribution. The policy requirement to provide a local labour agreement is also engaged for developments of 10 or more dwellings. Given that the current outline application seeks to deliver seven dwellings on part of the whole site allocation, only a proportion of the 20 dwellings is expected to be delivered through the comprehensive development. It is considered that it will be consistent and reasonable to require planning obligations which are proportionate to the number of dwellings proposed. This position was accepted by the appointed planning inspector when determining the three appeals for 22 Kick Hill Lane. A local labour agreement is not considered to be necessary as the development comprises of less than 10 dwellings and the wider local plan allocation will be delivered by a number of separate builders, including the possibility that some of the units of 22 Kick Hill Lane could be delivered as self-built custom dwellings. A viability appraisal has been submitted by the applicant to demonstrate that the proposal would not be viable with policy compliant obligations. An independent assessment has been commissioned by the Borough Council to determine whether the policy-based contributions are viable and if not, the level of contribution that can be delivered whilst maintaining economic viability. The independent assessment concludes that the development is viable to support affordable housing in the scenarios considered. Policy LPD 36 and the Affordable Housing Supplementary Planning Document confirms that a lower requirement of affordable housing contribution may be justified, provided that there is sufficient evidence provided and a viability appraisal has been undertaken by the council, which demonstrates that. I'm therefore satisfied that without the affordable housing provision, the development would still be considered to be sustainable. The proportion of payments for education, 23,875, and public open space, 37,624, would not render the development viable. The proposed development is considered to be visually acceptable, resulting no undue impact on neighbouring properties or the area in general, and there are no highway safety or car parking issues. The planning obligations, albeit absent of affordable housing, would meet the requirements of the local policies and the civil regulations. I therefore recommend that permission is granted in accordance with the report. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a proposal, which is the application number 2020 stroke 1108, for the erection of up to seven dwellings with private accessing and garaging. I'll formally move the application as Chair and ask councillor Wilkinson to second, please.
Formally seconded, Chair.
Thank you. Ask Kate to open the debate by calling out the list of councillors to speak. Please, Kate.
Councillor Barnes. Councillor Barnes. That's it. I think you were muted. You're muted now, councillor Barnes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh. Councillor Barnes, sorry, you've muted your microphone.
Peter, you're on mute. And you're on mute yourself. Peter, are you there? You're on mute.
That's, that's it.
Support the application.
Thank you.
Councillor Hope.
Oh, right, thank you. I find this one a little difficult to understand because the officer was talking about 16 Kick Hill Lane and then 22 Kick Hill Lane. And reading through it, it seems that it's potentially part of a much bigger development. Well, not much bigger, but another 20-odd properties. Could I first ask the officer just to explain that to me?
Yes, do.
Yes, you're quite, you're quite right. It's part of a wider allocation. So the allocation in the local planning document is for 20, up to 20, approximately 20 dwellings. And that is over the wider site. So the point that I was trying to make in my presentation and in the report is that we've received separate applications which have been made on the allocation because the site is in multiple ownership. So of particular relevance is the application that was allowed on appeal at number 22 Kick Hill Lane. And what Kevin's doing now is he's got the cursor and he's pointing to that part of the site. So that is in the southwestern corner. And what we can see there is a development which incorporates three dwellings at the front of the site. It retains the existing property at number 22. And then it proposes three further dwellings to the rear. But the fact that that application has been approved, that does change the character of Kick Hill Lane because that introduces a form of backland development. And from an officer and a member perspective, we previously tried to resist backland development and, to an extent, some piecemeal development on the site. The planning inspector has allowed to... The planning inspector has allowed two appeals. One of them is being constructed on-site now in accordance with that plan which is shown on the screen, that layout plan. But I give significant weight in the report to that appeal decision. And this development, you know, is in conformity with the development which has been approved on the wider allocation. But the unfortunate situation that we have here is that the site is in multiple ownership and it is coming forward as, in separate developments or separate planning applications. And what we're seeking to do is to make sure, so far as practically possible, that the planning obligation, the required policy compliant planning obligations are still provided because that was envisaged when the plan was adopted in 2018. So I hope that answers your query, Councillor Hope.
Yeah, yeah, it absolutely does. Yeah, that's very good. So my next concern then is over affordable housing because clearly on this development, the officers seem minded to say, well, it's not viable, so we won't get any affordable housing. Is that the case on the other part of the development? And are we actually once again looking at a situation where because of the way it's been approached and developed and so on, that there will in fact end up being no affordable housing across the whole site altogether?
So the site at 22 Kilkil Lane, that was proven to be unviable with planning obligations. So you're quite right, there'll be no affordable housing. With the applications which have been considered to date, if this were to be approved in accordance with the officer's recommendation, there'll be no affordable housing. But I would draw your attention, Councillor Hope, to the relevant policies which I outlined in my presentation earlier. That policy LPD 36 and also the Affordable Housing Supplementary Planning Document, they do allow a concession to be made in respect of affordable housing where that is supported by a viability appraisal. So the applicant for planning permission has provided a viability appraisal. And we've also commissioned, at the expense of the applicant, an independent report to verify the conclusions of their assessment. And that independent report is contained within your agenda pack.
Yeah, no, 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 I saw that and immediately I thought, yeah, once again, we're in a situation where we are not actually going to get any more affordable units. And it seems to happen on a regular basis. And, you know, I find it a concern, but I can't see a way around it because this is a larger site broken down into smaller sites. And then I'm sure the bit in the middle will eventually develop. And we'll still not get anything. But that's just an observation.
And a further observation that I would make in terms of your comments, so viability, it is a key issue in terms of the plan-making process. So going forward, there will be a significant amount of work which is undertaken, you know, around viability to ensure that, you know, allocations that are taken forward are viable. So yeah, there is, there is a lot, there will be a lot of future work which will inform, you know, the next local plan for the borough.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Thank you. No additional comments.
Councillor Keneely.
No additional comments, thank you.
Councillor Paling.
Thank you. Like Councillor Hope, I think my word would be sad about the lack of affordable housing on the plot. I read the viability assessments very carefully and can understand that the one we commissioned is in agreement with the developers' viability assessment on that aspect. But I'm really pleased that we are getting some community contribution because of the wider plots being taken into account. So that's a little step forward. I just wish we could get more affordable housing or contributions towards affordable housing in other places. Thank you.
Councillor David Ellis.
Thank you. Yes, I think, I share the regret that Councillor Hope and Councillor Paling have expressed. This was seen as a comprehensive site, but it's not been developed as a comprehensive site. And we know that, as has been expressed, that that's due to the inspector's decision. And I regret that we're not going to get any affordable housing, but accept the officer's recommendation that it's policy compliant without the affordable housing. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Councillor Miller.
Yes, I've read it time and time again and I've listened carefully. And I think this one's a difficult one for both the planners and for the people living there, but I will support the recommendation. But I am concerned, like Councillor Paling, that we don't get the affordable housing, but on the other hand, we are going to get some support with revenue.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm going to share disappointment with others. It's always disappointing when developers wiggle out of their policy compliant contributions. But as Councillor Paling has pointed out, you know, we will be getting something from it. And there is a, you know, an independent assessment. Sorry, thank you, Councillor Barnes. There is a, you know, an independent report in terms of the viability and, and we, you know, clearly we have to go, we have to go with that. And so I will be supporting the application.
Councillor Parr.
Thank you. Yes, I'm supporting the recommendation to grant outline planning and drawing attention to an article on, an item on page thirty-six, Ravenshead Parish Council strongly objects to the proposal on the grounds of, and it goes into six or seven bullet points there. But it makes nothing, it makes no suggestion, no recommendation for affordable housing. Oh, it does. But having said all of that, I then look at the conclusion that the development is considered to be visually acceptable and it results in no undue impact on neighbouring properties or the area in general. That's influenced me greatly. Thank you.
Councillor Wheeler.
Thank you. Support the recommendations, but I share the same concerns as Councillor Paling and Councillor Ellis and others have already made around the lack of affordable housing. It's very sad that, you know, that has already been made, that developers are seemingly wriggling out of their commitments to provide housing that's affordable to people. So support the recommendations, but very sad to see that there's not going to be any affordable housing on the site. Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence.
When it was in alphabetical, I could unmute myself in the knowledge that I would be called.
The whole point, even though people stay awake.
Yeah, there's no point in me going through what a lot of people have said about affordable housing. But I do have a concern that if an area is identified for development and one makes a assumption there will be affordable housing and then you get multiple people on there, that this could happen with other sites. And whilst we might get the contributions towards open space and education and transport or whatever, if larger sites were cut up into smaller ones with different ownerships, then affordable housing could disappear completely. I don't, that's, that's an observation. I'd like to ask Mr Avery, did I mistake what you said? I thought you said that some building had already started on the site.
Some building has started on the site in the southwestern corner. So the plan that I referred to, so the permission that's been granted on appeal, what I'd said is the development has commenced there and three of the properties at the front of the site, so two of them on the left, they are substantially complete. And the one on the other side of the access drive, which isn't in the photograph, I understand that there's also been a commencement there as well. So the point that I make is that it is a significant consideration that permission has been granted for this former development of twenty-two. So not only has the planning permission been granted on appeal, development has commenced and at least two of the properties on that site are now substantially complete. And it would appear that development would continue. So that permission granted on that site is now valid, you know, in perpetuity because there has been that commencement of development. And as the photograph shows, the two at the front are, but, you know, on full intent and purpose as complete dwellings.
Thank you. I will obviously support the officer's recommendations because I don't think there's any alternative.
Councillor Elwood.
Thank you. I don't think I can really add anything to what's already been said by the members, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Councillor McCrossan.
Yes, thank you, Kate. Yeah, I agree with the proposal. Just to reinforce what other fellow councillors have said, regarding affordable housing, particularly in view of the next ten years, it's going to be very difficult for a lot of people in all sorts of areas. So thanks for that.
Councillor Truscott.
Thank you, Kate. Well, personally, I don't like the form of backland development. And I know that the planning officers don't as well. I don't like the design of the houses themselves. And I think it's a pity, as has already been mentioned, that affordable housing is always in the firing line when it comes to financial viability assessments. But I also know from experience and from the planning inspector's decisions on 22 Kilkil Lane that if we didn't approve that, we'd get overruled by the planning inspectors anyway. So on that basis, I'll be voting in favour of it. Okay. I think we're all done. Are we all content?
Was anybody?
Move to the vote. Recommendation is on page forty-four of your agenda papers and it is to grant outline planning permission with the matters of access, layout, scale and appearance approved, subject to the owner entering into a planning obligation listed and the conditions listed on page forty-four to forty-eight. Kate, would you like to run through the roll call?
Yes, Councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Keneely.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Sorry, Kate. Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Miller.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Councillor Parr.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, Chair. That was carried.
Okay, that application has been approved. So we can move on now to Agenda Item Six, Application Number 2020 Stroke 1015, Arnold Hill House, Arnold Hill Park, Arnold, installation of a sixteen-inch diameter cast aluminium plaque on the southern elevation. Sorry, is Councillor Barnes bothered about?
Yes, I am, Chair.
Okay. Did you hear me introduce that item?
I did, Chair, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Which you'll find on page eighty-four of your agenda papers. And I've already stated our collective nonparticular interest in this item. And I'll might ask Mike Avery just to introduce it for us, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any, you know, specific comments to make in respect of the application. It's relatively straightforward. It's referred to Planning Committee because the application is made by us and the building is made by the Borough Council. And the building is owned by the Borough Council. So essentially, the application proposes to erect a plaque on the southern elevation of the building in memory of Thomas Hawkesley, water engineer. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. The proposal is an application 2020 Stroke 1015 for installation of sixteen-inch aluminium plaque on the southern elevation of Arnold Hill House. I'll formally move the application and ask councillor Wilkinson to second.
Formally seconded, Chair.
Okay. Do we need a debate on this? Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Lawrence.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say how pleased I am to see this, having been Deputy Mayor at the unveiling of the memorial to Hawkesley, who must be one of Guedling's most important inventors. I was going to say sons, but yes, he would have been a son. And I also to say that I hope that there are some other people that we can commemorate. And finally, just to say, I assume that the plaque location photograph is a mock-up and there won't be white bits round the circle on the plaque itself when it is attached to a wall.
No idea what the answer is to that. No, I don't.
So my understanding is that the graphic that you've seen on the screen is just a photo montage? I think that, yes, that's a photo montage quite clearly. The plaque isn't there yet. That's my understanding. But in terms of the finer details of this, I know that our Conservation and Heritage Officer has been, you know, involved in, you know, this very small, but still significant project.
Thank you. Is anybody else wishing to make a comment about this or shall we go straight to the vote? I don't see any.
I wanted to say, Chair, if you don't mind, that I am very surprised that we hadn't done this sooner. And I do hope that we will be meeting with the project officer to see if there are more suitable sites for such plaques to be erected in the borough to preserve our local history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment, Chairman?
Councillor Parr.
Yes. Yes, Thomas Hawkesley. A name that resonates with quite a few people in and around the Arnold area for what he did, what he achieved, et cetera. But given the plaque, I mean, we've, we've got another monument, shall we call it, in Arnold Park. Arnold Park and also one at the bottom of Ravenswood Road, which gives background history and his achievements. So we're very, very proud and happy to support this.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment or shall we move to the vote? I don't see any hands going up. If anybody else does, please let me know. Okay, the recommendation on page 86 of your agenda papers is to grant listed, listed building consent, subject to the conditions listed. Kate, would you like to run through a roll call of councillors for their votes?
Yes councillor Barnes. Councillor Barnfather. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Councillor Hope.
Sorry, four.
Councillor Kinnelly. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Miller. Councillor Paling.
Took trouble getting it unmuted, sorry again, don't know what's happening. Four.
Councillor Parr. Councillor Wheeler.
Four, thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
Councillor Truscott. Thank you Chair, that was carried.
Okay, thank you, that plaque is approved. So on to agenda item seven, reference number 1056/2020, land at five Station Road, car breach applying conditions, upper floor window not obscure glazed and not opening, which you'll find on page 90 of your agenda papers. And I'll ask Mike Avery to give us the background to this please.
Thank you Chairman. An existing upper floor window on side elevation has been replaced with clear glazing and this has created significant overlooking into the windows and garden area of the adjacent property 11 Wallace Avenue. The breach has therefore had an unacceptable impact on the residential amenities of the adjoining, of the occupants of the adjoining property. So the location of the window, if we could go back to the previous slide please, Mr Cartwright, with the only first floor window and that side elevation and that does afford a view, a direct view over into the adjoining property and its curtilage. So I therefore recommend that enforcement action is taken in accordance with the report recommendation to ensure that the window is obscure glazed and not opening unless the opening parts of the window are more than 1.7 metres from the floor level of the room in which the window is installed. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. So we have, thank you, we have a breach of conditions, reference 1056/2020, upper floor window not obscured glazed and not opening. Excuse me. I'll formally move the items Chair and ask councillor Wilkinson to second. Would everybody please make sure they're muted unless they wish to speak.
Formally seconded Chair.
Thank you councillor Wilkinson. Do we need debate on this? No. Or do you want to ask any questions? No, okay, so we will move to the recommendation, which is on page 94 of your agenda papers, that the head of development in place be authorised to take all enforcement action as listed on that page. Kate, can you run through the list of councillors for the vote please?
Yeah, so councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Councillor Hope. Councillor Kinnelly. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Miller. Councillor Paling. Councillor Parr. Councillor Wheeler. Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor McCrossan. Councillor Truscott. Thank you Chair, that was carried.
Okay, that recommendation is approved. Agenda item eight, enforcement reference number 0139/2020, land at two Rowan Avenue, Ravenshead, breach of planning control, construction of an unauthorized rear dormer extension and unauthorized boundary fence to the front of the property, which you'll find on page 96 of your agenda papers. And I'll ask Mike Avery to give us the background to this one please.
Thank you Chairman. The dormer window unit is of significant size, extending across the full width of the dwelling. The use of flat roofs, particularly at this scale, is usually not considered to be a good design principle. It is viewed as an incongruous addition that does not reflect the character or appearance of the dwelling. In addition, the unauthorized dormer unit is viewed from Oakwood Drive and as such would have some prominence within the street scene. The front, front boundary fence is above the one metre permitted development height, which is also out of character with all the front boundary treatments of the other dwellings in the neighbourhood. Both aspects of the unauthorized development are considered to be detrimental to the character of the dwelling and the immediate area. I therefore recommend that enforcement action is taken in accordance with the recommendation in the report to ensure the removal of the unauthorized dormer extension and the removal or reduction in height of the fence to one metre. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. I'll formally move this item as Chair and ask councillor Wilkinson to second please.
Formally seconded Chair.
Okay, do we need a debate on this? Shall we move to the votes? I don't see any hands going up.
Councillor Paling has her hands raised.
Has she?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry Chair, I just wish to make the comment that as opposed to the previous application, that could have been an oversight, this would appear to be a flagrant breach of officer discussions that have already been had with the owner of the property. I do want to see enforcement action taken. I am really disappointed that we can't recoup our costs on this because it must have taken a lot of office of time already. I don't know how much even revenue money needs to be spent on making an enforcement notice, but I am really disappointed that the owners of two Rowan Avenue have done this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we all agree with your sentiments on that one councillor Paling. So the recommendation on page 101 of your agenda papers is that head of development and place be authorised to take all enforcement action listed on that page. Kate, could you run through the list of councillors for the vote please?
Councillor Barnes.
For the recommendation.
Councillor Barnfather. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Councillor Hope. Councillor Kinnelly. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Miller. Councillor Paling. Councillor Parr. Councillor Wheeler. Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor McCrossan. Councillor Truscott. Thank you Chair, that was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. The recommendation is approved. So we move on to agenda item nine, reference number 0013/2020, land at 63 Catfoot Lane, Lambly, breach of planning control, construction of wall pillars and gates to the frontage of the site, together with the retention of engineering works to increase the land levels to the front of the site, which you'll find on page 104 of your agenda papers. I'll ask Mike Avery again to give us the background to this one please.
Thank you Chairman. Permission has previously been refused for the development because it was considered to be inappropriate development and that it would have an adverse impact upon the open character and appearance of the locality. An appeal made by the applicant to overturn the council's decision to refuse permission was dismissed by the planning inspectorate. Given the overall visual impact of the walls, pillars and gates and the engineering works involving the raising of land levels, the inspector agrees that the development is an inappropriate form of development in the green belt, which by definition is harmful to the green belt and the very special circumstances necessary to justify the development do not exist in this case. I therefore recommend that enforcement action is taken in accordance with the report to ensure that the land levels are restored to their original level before the development took place and the removal or reduction in height of the wall, pillars and gates to one metre. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much. Well, I'll formally move this item, breach of planning control, reference number 0171/2020, construction of, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, it's 2013/2020, in relation to wall pillars and gates and engineering works to increase land levels to the front of the site. I'll formally move this item and ask councillor Wilkinson to second.
Formally seconded Chair.
Okay, do we need a debate on this or? No. One thing I will say myself, I'm really surprised that the contractor, you know, sort of went ahead with this work, which is a pretty major operation without first checking that the, the owner of the land had planning permission for him to do it. But there you go. You're okay, everybody's happy to talk. The recommendation on page 109 of your agenda papers, head of development in place be authorised to take all enforcement action as listed on that page. Kate, would you like to run through the roll call of councillors?
Councillor Barnes. Councillor Barnfather. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Councillor Hope. Councillor Kinnelly. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Miller. Councillor Paling. Councillor Parr. Councillor Wheeler. Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor McCrossan. Councillor Truscott. Thank you Chair, that was carried.
Okay. Moving steadily on. Agenda item 10, reference number 0171/2020, land at 95 First Avenue Carlton, breach of planning control, construction of an unauthorized extension, which you'll find on page 112 of your agenda papers. I'll again ask Mike Avery to give us the background for this.
Thank you Chairman. Dwellings in the immediate vicinity are predominantly brick with some render. By contrast, this lean-to structure is timber built and the materials used in the extension are not considered to be in keeping with either the host dwelling or the surrounding properties. This situation is further exacerbated by the fact that the lean-to is in an extremely prominent location on a corner plot and built up to the edge of the public highways. I recommend that enforcement action is taken in accordance with the recommendation in the report to ensure the removal of the unauthorized extension. Thank you Chairman.
Okay, so we have a breach of planning control, reference number 0171/2020, construction of an unauthorized extension. I'll formally move this item as Chair and ask councillor Wilkinson to second.
Formally seconded Chair.
Thank you. Do we need a debate on this? Or is it in the general agreement that this is something more than an eyesore? So the recommendation on page 116 of your agenda papers is that the head of development in place be authorised to take all enforcement action listed on that page. Kate, would you like to run through the list for me please?
Councillor Barnes.
Move the recommendation.
Councillor Barnfather. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Councillor Hope. Councillor Kinnelly. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Miller. Councillor Paling. Councillor Parr. Councillor Wheeler. Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor McCrossan. Councillor Truscott. Thank you Chair, that was carried.
Okay, now we move on to some TPOs. Agenda item 11, report to planning committee, which you'll find on page 118 of your agenda papers, 15 Birchwood Drive, Ravenshead, tree preservation order 000133, 15 Birchwood Drive, protection of two oak trees. The proposal to request authorisation to confirm TPO 000133, I'll formally move this as Chair, ask councillor Wilkinson second.
Formally seconded Chair.
Does anybody have anything to say about this one or shall we move straight to the votes?
Move with that though.
Okay, the recommendations on page 119 of your agenda papers is to confirm TPO 000133, 15 Birchwood Drive without modification. Kate?
Councillor Barnes. Councillor Barnfather. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Councillor Hope. Councillor Kinnelly. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Miller. Councillor Paling. Councillor Parr. Councillor Wheeler. Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
Councillor Truscott. Thank you Chair, that was carried.
Okay, move on to agenda item 12, report to planning committee, find on page 122 of your agenda papers, 555 to 557 Moore Road, Bestwood Knots, tree preservation order number 000134, 555 to 557 Moore Road, Bestwood, with modifications, protection of two silver birch trees. The proposal is to protect two silver birch trees, reference TPO 000134. I'm sorry, I have to keep repeating these things, but you know, we have to for the record. I'll formally move this item as Chair and ask councillor Wilkinson to second.
Formally seconded Chair.
Thank you. The recommend, I'm saying that everybody's contents have moved to the vote. The recommendation on page 123 of your agenda papers is to confirm TPO 000134 with the modification to the title of the order to read 555 Moore Road, Bestwood, omitting any reference to 555. Somebody is making a lot of noise. Can you make sure that you're muted please? Okay, and missing any reference to 557 Moore Road and to modify the map to correctly display the location of the silver birch tree T1. Kate, will you run through the roll call please?
Councillor Barnes. Councillor Barnfather. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Councillor Hope. Councillor Kinnelly. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Miller. Councillor Paling. Councillor Parr. Councillor Wheeler. Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor McCrossan. Councillor Truscott. Thank you Chair, that was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Agenda Item 13, lucky 13, reports to the planning committee, which you'll find on page number 126 of your agenda papers, the farmhouse, Bankhill Farm, Bankhill, Woodborough. Bankhill doesn't give us a lot of work here. Tree preservation order 000137, the farmhouse, Bankhill Farm, protection of one copper beech tree. The proposal to protect one copper beech tree, reference TPO 000137. I'll formally move this item as Chair and ask councillor Wilkinson to second.
Formally seconded, Chair.
Thank you. I take it there is no debate necessary and everyone's content to move to the vote. The recommendation on page 127 of your agenda papers is to confirm the tree preservation order 000137, the farmhouse, Bankhill Farm, without modification. Kate, would you run through the roll call, please?
Councillor Barns.
Support.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Kinnelly.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Miller.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Parr.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, Chair, that was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Agenda Item 14, reports to planning committee, page 129 of your agenda papers, application 2020/0340, land adjacent to 34 Marlborough Road, Woodthorpe, to build four new dwellings, was refused planning permission, applicant's appeal. Appeal was dismissed by planning inspector on the grounds that the proposed layout would be at odds with the existing spatial pattern of development. Agenda item 15, reports to planning committee, page 131, future planning applications. Any questions on those? Nope. Agenda item 16, planning delegation panel action sheets, 8th of January, page 123, 15th of January, page 137, 22nd of January, page 141, 29th of January, page 145, 5th of February, page 147, 12th of February, page 149. Okay, thank you very much. Agenda item 17, any other items the Chair considers urgent? No, I haven't got any items. Just to say, thank you very much for attending. Thank you very much for contributing to the meeting and have a happy and safe life until we meet again.
Thank you.